Good morning. For some, William.
Mr. Mayor, good morning.
Welcome to the sixth House of Budget meeting for Tuesday, August 19th. Uh, who's gonna start this morning? Well, one minute, public comment. Do we have anybody else?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Good afternoon, to budget, do a review of and discussion on the proposed fiscal year 2022 annual budget, five-year capital improvement program 2022 through 2026, inclusive of all funds and forecast. We have with us Ms. Jennifer May, our Chief Financial Officer and Deputy City Mayor.
Good morning. I have the really easy part today. Uh, you have met Scott Butler in a variety of settings today, but as is our tradition, we like to introduce and acknowledge people when it's their first presentation in front of you as the city council. So Scott and Paula will be your hosts for today, but just wanted to introduce and acknowledge Scott. You've been here now 10 weeks, 10 weeks as Director of Budget and Strategy and hard at work making a difference from day one. So welcome.
Scott, 10 weeks, not bad throwing his wolves.
That's how you describe yourself, huh?
Just called us the Wolves early this morning. Thank you.
Hey, William, that's it.
Yes, sir.
They might be the little wolves.
Go, William, go.
Okay, so I'm, I'm actually just gonna do a quick introduction and then I'll turn it over to Paula. Uh, just a reminder, this is to, uh, provide you with information so that you can make informed decisions. Uh, we're, we're keeping track of questions. I think we're gonna ho- hope to provide you a summary of all the questions that you asked, um, by, uh, end of date tomorrow. So, um, but please ask questions because I'm still trying to learn. I don't know what a lit is. I don't know what a pit is. A peg fund, mud is something I spray off my kid's shoes, but it's important here. So, uh, it'll help me with my learning process if you ask a question. But, uh, with that, I will turn it over to Paula.
Morning, everyone. Um, this morning, we're gonna be talking about the exciting world of compensation benefits. Um, so as we get started, just a reminder of, oh, wait, sorry, wrong question. There we go. Okay, what did I do, Thomas? Oh, there we go. Um, so just as a reminder, um, when we approach the annual budget process for compensation and benefits, staff looks to the council's compensation policy for guidance. So this policy, your policy to us, um, gives us direction on how we manage our approach to what we want to do with pay, what we want to do with salary structures, how we want to offer benefits, um, and what those benefits are for our employees. Um, it gives us direction on paid for performance. We do not do COLAs or cost, uh, which is a cost of living adjustment or across-the-board adjustments. We strictly focus on paid-for-performance and what does our merit pool look like? Um, we make sure that our benefits, um, and our compensation is competitive in the market, but we also make sure that it's responsibly, um, fiscally sound. Um, we apply benefits burden test according to the policy to make sure that what we are doing is, um, in line with what we see, not in other public sector agencies, but actually private sector companies. Um, we make sure that every decision that we make or recommendation that we bring to you fits into these core values. So the items that I will be covering with you this morning are our salary structure changes. Um, so this is moves for both public safety and non-public safety. Uh, merit pool recommendations and an update on our pension system as well as our group health benefits. Finally, we'll be reviewing how the benefits burden looks and what our benefit fund income statement is. So public safety compensation. Uh, in 2020, we conducted a comprehensive, uh, public safety compensation study. We implemented the first phase of the salary structure adjustments in FY21, which we're in now. So for FY22, we are recommending that the remainder of those or the final phase of those salary structure adjustments be implemented. This will result in structure moves, um, on the police detention and dispatch salary structure, anywhere from 1.5% to 6.2%. Um, and for fire EMS salary structure, 1.9 to 10.2%. The annualized impact of these changes is approximately 860,000. And just as a reminder, uh, when we say public safety salary structures, that's all employees in positions that are in our police detention and dispatch salary structure and our fire EMS structure. Um, we are planning to manage the overall impact of this change, um, with the mid-year implementation. And as a reminder, there are no across-the-board adjustments. We are strictly making sure that employees fit within the ranges, um, that we, uh, have established for FY22. Now, in FY23, we are still going through the, um, analysis of compression, um, to look at adjusting employees based on years of service, um, that fall within these ranges that are seeing some of these, um, significant jumps. On non-public safety, um, we have three structures in this group. It is our non-exempt, our exempt salary structure, and our management and elected officials. These structures move annually based on CPI. When we looked at the CPI this year, we saw that in February, the CPI was 1%. However, flash forward to April, it was four and a half percent. Um, these structure moves help us have competitive salaries for employees that enter our workforce, our, our opportunity to recruit new employees. Um, so we felt that to be fiscally responsible, we needed to recommend at least a 3% structural move to our non-public safety salary structures. This change, um, will result in approximately $225,000 in costs, but we plan to implement it mid-year, um, similar to public safety structure changes. And again, no across-the-board adjustments to employees. We merely make sure that employees that are in the ranges fall within the newly established ranges moving forward. Um, next we come to merit pool. Uh, for FY20, we are recommending a 3% merit pool, um, for employees. We are also recommending that rather than applying the merits one time, which we did in fiscal year 21 to manage, um, financial expectations of the organization, we are recommending that this is a recurring 3% merit pool that is applied to salaries. The city recognizes paid-for-performance as a guiding principle for our, um, based on the compensation philosophy. Um, and this will allow staff to develop a merit matrix that will hopefully be able to reward those high performers um, in accordance with what we are seeing with the CPI in this area. Next, we come to, uh, Texas municipal retirement system. So the city is a member of TMRS, um, as an employee pension program. As a reminder, in 1980, city council opted out of social security for all pension eligible employees. Our contribution rate for '22 is going to be 14.48%. This is a slight decrease of 0.09% um, from our current rate in 2021. Um, however, we are seeing that, um, as of the actuarial valuation of our account, um, which is based on, uh, the tw- December 31, 2020, um, valuation, our fund is at 90.1% um, funding. So we did see an increase in our overall funded ratio of the pension system. So we're very happy with that, with that. And overall, the city's commitment to funding the pension program and TMRS's long-term planning efforts have strengthened the system and provide cities like us with the tools to help recruit and retain employees, our championship workforce. So next, we're coming to group benefits. Um, I'm gonna be focused primarily on the city-provided benefits, um, but we are gonna touch on a few of the ancillary benefits. Um, so, uh, as we are finishing up 2021, a number of our major contracts are coming to a conclusion. So in May, we began a, a comprehensive RFP process for all of our major benefits. Um, these things include, uh, our medical plan, which is composed of multiple elements, uh, because we are self-funded. So we have two plans, um, and we went out to contract. There are not only third-party administrator services, but also our, um, stop-loss program and our pharmacy benefit manager program. Um, we have a fully insured dental and a voluntary vision plan that we offer to employees. And again, contracts were coming to an end, so we wanted to make sure we had the best, uh, competitive programs to offer our employees. Um, another group of benefits that, um, contract was concluding were our life and disability products. So the city provides basic life insurance to all full-time employees of one times your annual salary or $50,000, whichever is greater. We also provide long-term disability to our full-time employees. Then employees can elect short-term disability or and/or, uh, additional life insurance carriages, not only for themselves, but for their immediate family members. Um, we also provide an employee assistance program. And while this is not a significantly expensive contract, it, it actually is a, a very small amount that we pay. We've wanted to go out and look and make sure with, um, all of the mental health challenges that we're seeing, not only across the country, um, but here in our city and in our workforce, we wanted to make sure that we had the best EAP program for our employees. So we made the decision to bid this one out as well. I'm sorry, to RFP it. Um, and then next, uh, we also looked at our Health Savings Account Administration, which is, um, an element of our medical plan, um, as well as our flexible spending account, um, program, which, um, is separate from the medical plan, but does go hand-in-hand with it. So this slide represents, uh, the RFP finalists. We had over 70 companies bid on some or all of our different programs. So, uh, through our consultant, um, we narrowed down to these finalists and, uh, very thorough evaluation was made of the best and final offers. And you can see I've highlighted, um, those that, uh, we are recommending move forward, um, contracting with for 2022. So the good news is, um, Cigna, who has been a long-term partner with us, really came through. Their proposals were very, very competitive, um, and really brought the best value to the organization, um, both financially and in the benefits they provide to our employees. So we will be coming back to council in September, uh, with contracts recommending that we stay with Cigna for medical and all elements of our medical plan. Um, our dental and vision, um, we are also recommending that we stay with Discovery Benefits Incorporated, which has changed its name this year to WEX, uh, for our FSA accounts and remaining with our incumbent, um, AWP for the EAP program. Um, we are, however, going to be bringing new contracts for life and disability. Um, and this is something that we've not done before, but we are actually going to unbundle those two programs to have our life products with Oaks, um, who is a very prominent public sector life insurance carrier. Um, and we are returning to a previous carrier, Symmetra, for our disability products. We just found that their, um, programs offered a lot more advantages to our employees at a more cost-effective rate than, um, staying with the incumbent's proposal. So you will be seeing these contracts heading to you, um, in September. So just to kind of under- give you a little bit better understanding of how our medical plan is performing. Um, and as a reminder, we meet with the Compensation Committee, um, which, um, most of our members are here to this morning. Uh, we meet with them on a monthly basis, uh, and we constantly give updates on how our medical plan is performing. So this is our opportunity to kind of stand in front of the rest of you and talk about that. Um, but we have been self-funded since 2012. Um, our total plan per capita claims over five years, uh, is, um, trending at 2.6%, while we're seeing the national average trend around 7% for the same period. So, um, what this means is our plan has hovered close to that national average, um, with the, the impact from COVID last year where, um, it, it reduced the amount of services our employees were able to access. Um, we saw huge savings last year, but we are seeing that, that employees have been able to begin accessing medical care again, uh, for those elective elements. Um, and we are seeing a little bit of an uptick, but it's very manageable. So what does this mean in dollars on paper? Um, we are self-funded. That means we only pay our administrative costs and then we pay our claims. We don't pay a fully insured premium, like when you write your check for your car insurance. If you don't have a crash, you don't get any money back. But if you just paid when you had a crash, you don't know what it's gonna look like. Um, that's kind of how health insurance works. Um, so what we have our consultant do every year, whether we're going out for a comprehensive RFP or we're just having an annual renewal, we ask them to look at our plan, um, in the marketplace and if we were fully insured. If we made the decision that we don't want to be self-insured anymore and we want to go out and buy fully insured insurance and we want to pay that monthly premium no matter what we spent. Uh, so this chart illustrates the paper savings of what would have happened if we had been fully insured for, um, the last 11 years, um, that we've been, uh, maybe it's 10, um, well, we've been self-funded, um, pardon? 10 years. Yeah, cuz 12 till 11 or 21, so. Um, and you will see that 18, 18 was a bad plan year for us. Um, that was the year that we hit our aggregate stop-loss. Um, and that really, really threw us for a loop, um, because we'd had some really good years. We had savings, um, on paper. Um, but that year taught us so many life lessons on how to manage our self-funded plan. And one of those big things that it taught us is the importance of not only growing our reserve, but growing our fund balance. So we're gonna talk a little bit more about that when we get to the benefit fund, uh, slide. So what are we going to do with benefits, um, for '22 funding? Uh, we had entered this process anticipating a 4% increase moved to the benefits fund, and we can manage our '22 contracts within the current funding. Our premium contributions will remain the same for the medical plan as far as how we fund it. Um, however, we are recommending an increase of 1% to employees for the Dependent Cost Sharing Program. Now, this is part of a longer-term strategy where, um, right now, the city is supplementing a little more than 75% of the dependent care costs on the medical plan. So this 1% shift will bring it down, uh, 1%, um, but will help us, um, take baby steps towards our ultimate goal, which what we see in the marketplace is a dependent cost share of about 60%. So we are going to take some incremental steps, um, because we want to, um, not kind of spring those things on the employees, and the employees have been managing themselves through the medical plan very responsibly, so we want to recognize that. Um, this 1% cost shift, um, is gonna result in an increase anywhere from $6 to $14 per month for the employee. So what they're gonna, uh, see coming out of their paycheck. We are also making a few minor tweaks to the plan, so no major plan design changes, but we are recommending a decrease to the mental health co-pay. Um, and we can fund that, um, by, uh, some of the, uh, cost-sharing strategies that we've implemented, um, with the premiums. But we are also recommending the implementation on the Save on Specialty Pharmacy Program, which is through the Kelsey Program. And so this will help our plan and our members manage their costs when it comes to specialty drugs. Um, the other thing that these changes will allow us to do is now we will have the ability to increase our reserve to a full 20% of expected claims, cuz right now we're, uh, about 17 and a half percent. Um, and it also allows us to add some stability to the fund balance, which will help us in those future years when we have that next high claim year. So now that brings us to the benefits burden. And like I said, the policy, um, the council policy tells us that the benefits burden needs to be competitive to the public sector. So when we go to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, we look at what is state and local government. And you can see for '22, um, it's 38.1%. Uh, for public sec- uh, private sector, 100-plus employees, we're seeing it at 32.8% and private sector 500-plus employees, which is more like us, um, 35%. Our calculated benefits burden for '22 is 31.4%. So we are not only managing our benefits and compensation like the private sector, we're managing it like a small company. And then that brings us to the benefits fund. Uh, so you can see with our '22, uh, budget, we are projecting revenues of 15.04 million with expenses of 14.84 million, so a net income of 0.2 million. Um, our reserve for claims, uh, we are growing it to 2.42 million. Um, and this will allow us to have an end, ending fund balance of 1.17 million. So our FY21 budget, our ending fund balance was budgeted to be 0.34 million. If we have a bad claims year where we need to access four or $500,000 or more, that was not gonna help us. That would cause us to have to dip into the reserve and to struggle to find a way to replenish that reserve so that if that bad year transitioned into two bad years in a row, we, we wouldn't be able to, to deal with that. We would have to do something like we did in '18, which was look at other funds for transfers in to help keep the fund stable. Having a fund balance of 1.17 million will give us that stability and help us take this fund and move it forward in the same fashion that we do all our other funds. So that is my information on competent benefits. Y'all have been very quiet. What questions do you have?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, I was just wondering, what is the average expected, uh, merit pool of, uh, other cities in the area? And also our peer cities, cities in the non-private, uh, case, non-public sector?
So, um, we've been part of different ad hoc studies, um, and surveys, and we're seeing cities do anything, some cities do a cost of living and a merit. And so when you add those together, you're looking at 4% to 5%. We're seeing some cities that are pay-for-performance like us around 3% to 4%. Um, it, it just depends. And then there are some cities that just do across-the-board, and most of them are 3% to 5%.
If I could, I mean, we were the outlier last year in doing, uh, doing one time. I mean, I, it was not the norm for our region. Just anecdotally, I don't have, sitting in the TCMA meetings, we are, um, uh, you know, a lot of cities are, your cities this year going into 5%, 6%, 7% with COLAs, so.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, so on our page five, you referred to, uh, composite, uh, comprehensive study done in 2020. Was that early in the year or later in the year?
It actually started, um, in December of 19, and we received the results in, I wanna say, May.
Okay, early in COVID.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and as I advance to page six, sorry, I have a few questions.
No, no.
Yeah, um, I'm going to assume, because of my limited understanding and in this and other things, this is all part of our M and O, right? Correct? Okay, so when I ask this question, it's gonna sound relatively redundant, and I apologize. But, uh, the money that we're asking for to make improvements to, um, you know, our benefits, that's coming directly from the people and our retail and, and residential. Yesterday, I spoke with countless people that are unemployed in our community and that their jobs are cut, and they're just in a mess. I mean, this is, this is very motivating, or it would be if I were a staff member here, you know, a team member. And being mindful of the conversations I had yesterday that some were painful. I just, I just want everybody to remember, there's a lot of pain out there right now. And, and this is really nice, but there's a lot of people hurting because of 2020. Sorry, I'm emotional, but the conversations were painful. And so as I read through this, I'm like, golly, you know, the, uh, conversation one lady had with me. She said, is there any room in this budget you're referring to? Is there anything you can do to reduce the spending so it's not so? She said, it's $4, but I don't have it. And I'm not saying that's the common. You know, thankfully, our city's strong. I think we've got a great economy. I think we've got a great, you know, city, period. But man, yesterday was just painful conversation after another. And I, I didn't realize I was so impacted by it until I was listening to this. Um, this is a great package, and I'm happy for our staff, but it's coming from people that are in pain. And so that's just a reminder, as I was going through my questions. Um, I'm, I, going back to page six on historical merit pool, where you want, or the request was made for an annual 3%, just sorry, you don't have to come back. I, I'm always cautious of that, uh, not coming back and saying, hey, we should do this or not do this, especially when we're spending, you know, the people's money, retail and residential. So I, I don't want to take that away from retail. I am so grateful for our retail. Uh, as I flip through here and I looked at, um, the choices that were made on page nine regarding the, uh, RFP finalists, you know, best and final. I'm curious if you've surveyed the staff and they prefer Cigna. Was that survey or that, uh, was this decision based on that, like the staff also said, you know what, Cigna's great, they're our incumbent, these other, you know, whatever? Or did the staff not even see what Etna and United offered, just to give you an example on that board? Um, so the staff was like, Cigna rocks, or, you know, I just want to make sure.
Um, so that, that is a great question. We sometimes will pull together an employee benefits committee, um, from time to time. Other than that, we do have a very active wellness committee, and the wellness committee works very closely with Cigna. Um, we also have standing meetings with Cigna where we talk about any kind of issue or concern. Um, we have not had anything significant come across our desk in a number of years about concerns with Cigna. Yes, there are minor hiccups or complaints. Um, I, I'll give you a great example. A couple of years ago, we made the decision, and I don't know how popular it was, but to make colonoscopies free. Crazy as it sounds, because, uh, and I don't know, there was actually a news article on the Today Show about it one morning, where if you go in and you do the cold guard and they detect something and you have to go do a colonoscopy, then it becomes a diagnostic test and it's no longer preventative, even though they're just checking it out. And colonoscopies, if you haven't priced them out, and unfortunately you've had to, can, can be hundreds, if not over $1,000. Um, we made the decision a few years ago that all colonoscopies, whether they're diagnostic or preventative, will be covered by the medical plan at no cost to the employee. And from time to time, we get someone who doesn't understand that our plan is different from all the other plans out there, and they tell the employee, oh, you've got a $1,000 co-pay. And so we have to go back and smack them on the hand and say, no, we value our employees' health and preventative care, whether it's diagnostic or true preventative, is that important to us? We cover it at 100%. So yes, we do have those conversations, those tough conversations, not only with Kelsey, or, but also with, um, Cigna. But we have not had any major complaints. In fact, we have employees that come and ask us, hey, can we stay with Cigna? I really like my doctors. I really like this. Um, and through our wellness program where we see the most, um, contact with our regular employees and our Cigna administration plan, um, lots of raves and reviews.
So what I'm hearing you say is it wasn't a formal survey, it was an informal sort of day-to-day. And I only ask, as in my private sector business, uh, I remember it was so important. Benefits are everything, you know, it keeps us and our kids are healthy and all. And, uh, so you answered my other question about wellness, and I'm sorry, I had a few questions. Uh, you answered my question about wellness. We must have a wellness program, uh, as I was looking at the numbers. But you're, you're killing me on 2018 of, uh, the self-funded versus fully funded.
Yes.
You didn't go into the lesson we learned.
Well, we, we learned that we needed to shore up our fund balance. We needed to grow our reserve. Because up until then, when we started in 2012, our reserve was 1.25 million, and we didn't grow it. And '18 came and ate our lunch. Um, and, and this number was only the number that was the aftermath of once we got our, um, stop-loss, our aggregate stop-loss back. We actually went negative a lot more than that. We had to get that aggregate stop-loss back, which we'll be talking about stop-loss in a couple of weeks. Um, but that, that was the net effect of it. But that, that was the net effect of it, but we actually went negative 800,000?
We had transfer money. We had actually make up that fund balance. Here's something else we, you know, what we saw in that was, it's better to have a very robust wellness plan. What Paula was saying about the colonoscopies, you know, colon cancer, any of those things. Better to have those kind of tests run, catch it early, because part of that loss in 2018, there were what, three people?
Oh, yeah.
Three of them had cancers. But the numbers were extraordinary. And you can probably attribute the lower numbers now to the, you know, how robust the wellness plan is and the fact that people, you know, are going in and taking care of themselves on the front end as opposed to when you get diagnosed with cancer on the back end.
Absolutely.
But, and just to clarify, we will have future years with negative numbers there. And so that, that's just part of it. It is building up the fund balance and the reserves to be able to handle it. That was really our strategy. But you'll see in a 10-year period, you should, you're going to have one or two of them.
Well, she said it was a lesson learned, or whatever she used. I'm like, well, I want to know what that lesson was, because I don't want to repeat. Last question. Now, I think I know the answer already. So on the employee benefits funding, you were making recommendations, you know, line item two regarding 1%. This is all, again, coming from, it's all part of the M and O. It's all figured into what we're already seeing? Or it will be an adjustment to what we've already seen?
Because employees, it's all part of the budget. The shift of the 1% is shifting the, what the employees are paying on their dependent coverage by 1% versus that.
That's really it, I mean, we're good.
Can I respond to William's response? Are there questions?
No, yes.
No, I totally appreciate what you're saying, William, especially about your conversations, because we've talked about that. But having worked with the compensation committee, this is not the place to find any, any room for compensation to be, to be, this is not the place. I mean, our, our staff is incredible, and we've looked at this on compensation. They, they deserve what they're having here. So we're going to find a way to cut the budget. This is not the place. And I, I.
Am I allowed to respond to that? I don't know the rules here. So I want to absolutely agree. I think our staff fabulous. I think that everybody is working in the right direction. I want to make this clear. With that said, we had our conversation recently about some spending issues that we had concerns for. They are everywhere, in private business, in, in public, the public sector. And our oversight to every aspect of this budget is paramount. Regardless, nothing against staff or anyone, okay? I think it's, if there's anywhere, when we dig in, when we analyze, especially this benefits portion, we may find voids where the, our staff needs more attention, not take away, but add to. And so if there was any place I want to dig in, the, the compensation, the benefits are everything for me. And I get your point, but as much as I trust our leadership in the city, I just think every part of this should be exposed and transparent. And that's why I bring that up, and I heard the pain yesterday. And I'm just like, oh my God, I didn't think it affected me until I heard how really great these benefits are. And I'm like, wow, that's what that was from. It's not a critical thinking towards our staff at all. It's just, there's got to be something, somewhere in this, somewhere, that's all. It's not about taking away.
Sure. Hi, Paula.
Hi, sir.
The public safety compensation?
Yes, sir.
Do you have about an average per employee that goes up? The 86, the 725 to the 860, how does it affect the employee?
So right now, this is only affecting those employees that are at the bottom of the ranges to move them up. The compression analysis, so that is the major thing that will actually touch each employee. Right now, we're just making sure that they fall within the range.
Explain compression, Paula.
Yes, sir. So what, we've taken the range and we've moved it up this much. So this little piece has to, let's say it's 20 employees, they need to go to the minimum. So now, those maybe new hires from 19 and 20 and 21 are going to be making the same, or maybe just a few cents less than somebody who's been here since 17 or 18. So what compression does is, that's what compression is. So what our analysis is, is to look at applying a formula for time and grade to get them to move forward up to the midpoint. And then once they reach the midpoint, if they still have time and grade, then we overlay their performance evaluations to determine if they get anything beyond that. But it's just to make sure that those employees that were hired, say, in the last five or six years, are not all compressed at the bottom of the range with someone who starts tomorrow.
Correct, so that's where the 1.9 to the 10.2 comes in, right? So the range can be 1.9 to 10 to get them into the mid-range.
Yes.
But if I'm, if I'm a fireman and I've been here for 10 years, am I in that range or am I down here?
You will be in that range, so you won't be affected. It's really those new hires that are getting just shoved up underneath those mid-tenured employees.
Okay, so let me ask that question a little different. If I'm a fireman and I've been here 10 years, these folks that have only been here one or two, are they moving up to where I'm at now?
They, they can be right behind you, yes. And so that's why we need to do the compression analysis, because these changes are more significant than what we would typically see. And this, we typically do this with a major study like this, and this is not an anomaly. The only anomaly is because we've had to phase this in, and because of the financial impact, we're looking at the compression analysis to be another $700,000. And that's just a base. That's not benefits on top of that. So we're having to look at that for 23.
And I heard you say the 23, and I feel that's very important that we get there.
Yes, and, but we do, we did commit to the compensation committee and to all of you that if we can financially manage doing the compression analysis, compression analysis and implementation earlier, we will bring that back to council to let you know. But right now, that is our plan, that has been our plan since last year, was to look at this as a multi-year phase-in. But as soon as it is financially responsibly sound decision, we will bring it to you to, to make that.
And you don't know what that 23 impact is yet, or do you know?
We have an estimate.
We have an estimate, but those numbers can tweak a little bit.
What's an estimate?
What is that number?
Around 700,000, it makes.
That's for compression?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, so in the grand scheme of things, in a $300 million budget, $700,000 is nothing. The way I see it. And I'm saying something opposite of what William just said, the $4 situation. But this is our public safety employees. And I know it's, we may be late in the game, Mike, I'm not sure if we are or not, but can we not find $700,000 to bring 23 forward to take care of our public safety, which is more than 50% of our workforce?
Sorry, but.
Yeah, so I'm going to let Jennifer make, she's the brains of the operation, speak to this.
Good, because I'm not the brains.
Yeah, so this is one of the frustrating parts about budgeting. It's like small dollar amounts feel like they should be really easy to find.
Sure.
And when you multiply them on a recurring basis over the life of the five-year forecast have major dollar impacts. And so if you will remember, the forecast, we are managing for a lot of things, upside opportunity. And so we've tried to identify things like this that we can come to you in advance, but also downside risk. Sales tax is still a big unknown. We have the property tax and commercial lawsuits. And coupled all of that, which is kind of that like two-year reset we've been talking about, there's a tremendous amount of new recurring revenue growth that we've built into your FY23 budget. And so we've just, there's a lot of risk right now of committing to. And so what you will see us doing in advance of the fall retreat is looking at that tenure needs, looking at those new revenue ideas, and trying to look at it as a holistic package of what we're confident that we can achieve. Because this is, in a lot of areas, you could just be like, let's do it, and we'll monitor it, and if we can't, we'll pull back at the last minute. I am not at all willing to recommend stating a more aggressive commitment to our public safety officers and firefighters and dispatchers, and then have to pull back at the last minute if the downside, I would much rather under-promise and over-achieve. But it is like the top priority for us, once we can have a better look at the recurring revenue long-term.
And our timing to implement this is July. And so that, that is, the reason that timing is there, because we prefer to do this all at one time, is that that will give us enough time to determine, then we will come back to the council to essentially amend the budget.
Well, that's what we do best, is we look at things mid-year, and if we can look at that, then I appreciate that. Another page.
When you said it's a $300 million budget, this is all general budget.
General budget, it's 97 million.
And so you have really limited, you know, reduced resources that you can have.
Good point, good point. Non-public safety compensation?
Yes, sir.
Why do elected officials need 3% increase?
They're, they're in a pay scale, and they just, that pay scale moves up to every other one.
Does it have to?
No, it doesn't.
Why, I, I would recommend, we don't need it. 3%. I would say we find, find a few dollars. It's not much. It's not, but I just feel that. It's, it's, I'm, I'm speaking for myself, but the rest of the council can decide. So that's just a follow-up for you.
Okay.
Page nine, group benefits, internal benefits. Do we have an employee contribution self-funded fund that helps employees? For instance, at my company, I give $10 a paycheck or something like that. I don't know what I give, but we have 8,000 people contributing to this fund. If I have a life incident that happens, and obviously we deal with a lot more professional individuals, the 800-plus individuals that work for this organization. But in my world, we have a lot of 18 to 25-year-olds that work for us in retail. And sometimes they can't make rent, or a car payment, or a life incident happens, and they need $1,000 to help bury someone. Do we have an internal fund set up like that? It's just an idea for you and your team to, it has nothing to do with the budget. It really doesn't, because it's self-funded by all the 822 employees that we have.
We do have a program. It is not like that. It's a little bit different. It's called catastrophic assistance. And this is where employees donate their vacation time.
Okay.
And we have rules around the ability to donate. And then if an employee is faced with a catastrophic situation that takes them away from work, then the committee meets, they evaluate that request. We get input from the department. But the committee makes the decision to award them time to be off work to deal with that situation, so they don't lose pay. Yes, sir. So it's, it's that kind of situation. But we could definitely look at, we have done things in the past, more ad hoc. We have an employees, helping employees committee, especially after the flooding and after hurricane.
Yeah, we've had fundraising ventures.
Yes. Yes, yes, and, you know.
And I see the staff come together when things happen like that, which is, which is awesome. I mean, with, with 800 employees, it's not that big pool of money. But, you know, sometimes $100s can help a lot of people. And just an idea for you and your team to toss out there, nothing, nothing more.
Equity issues and administration issues, and has not paid help with funds, and who's paying the grants?
But any, anytime there's been a situation, we've, we've popped up ad hoc things. I mean, HR will host bake sales every day. We do host bake sales all the time. But yes, sir.
One final question.
Sure.
And I think this one you'll have to come back to me, or come back to us on. Change is tough, and we've been with Cigna for many, many, many years. Can we see a comparison of what Cigna versus Etna versus United cost is?
Yeah, you actually saw that as compensation.
Oh, you did? I'm sorry, yeah, so, okay.
Compensation committee saw all the, all the numbers.
Yeah.
And the numbers prove out.
I don't.
There's a little bit of a difference, you know, we're happy to share those with you.
Don't need to see it.
Okay.
Don't need to see it, I'm sorry.
All right, no problem. Yes, sir. No, those are great questions. Anyone else? Well, I'm going to turn it over to Scott. Thank y'all very much.
Every meeting I've been, I've said this is actually the most stressful part.
Whether or not I.
Okay, working the machine.
Yeah, I think we're in good shape. And I felt to mention at the start, as far as what we're going to cover today. So in addition to compensation, I'm going to review internal service funds, the airport, solid waste, and then I'm going to cover special revenue funds. So next week, we'll cover utility fund as well as economic development. So we'll start fleet replacement technology. So, you know, fleet replacement and technology, those are two things that are an important focus for the city. It translates directly to service in terms of our ability to deliver service. On the fleet replacement side, just touching on the strategies that were implemented in FY21. It included a reduced transfer from the general fund by 75%. There was a planned inter-fund loan of $1.5 million in case we needed that. It was, turns out it was not needed, so you'll see that reflected in the financials. And then, and I just want to highlight this, that public safety is always the priority with this. And there was no, there was no reductions to the public safety groups in terms of replacements in either one of these funds going forward. For FY22, there's a plan to replace 37 vehicles with a continued emphasis on public safety. You can see the breakdown of the, of the fleet by area. I should note that in terms of fire apparatus and ambulance, they're not included in these numbers. But, so public safety is obviously a large part of this, the fleet replacement fund. Just a quick look at the financials. You'll see the major difference between the budget and the projections on the expense side is that $1.5 million that was planned and then not needed. And then, just as from a policy standpoint, the goal is to maintain a minimum of 10% of the value of the fleet inventory for this fund. On the high-tech replacement side, in terms of strategy for FY21, there was the goal to reduce the transfer from the general fund by 50%. And we revised the replacement list to try to hone in on the things that were most critical. Again, we fully funded the public safety needs and reduced on the general government side. For FY22, the goal is to rebuild this, this fund over an extended time period, focus on just the must-haves on the general government side. And then we'll continue to fund the public safety items. One thing I do want to point out here is, it looks like it's actual decrease, but in the FY21 projections, there are some carryovers as well as some budget amendments that were done during the year. So it's not an actual like reduction in the overall priority for this fund. And you can see the percentage, basically the percentage that is allotted for police in this replacement. Here's a quick summary of the financials. Again, the goal is to make sure that we're keeping pace with technology in order to meet service for the community. And then we have a 10% goal as far as the value of the technology that the city utilizes. Any questions on those?
I don't know the answer to what I'm asking.
Chances are, I probably don't either, but I got experts.
But we got a lot of those, though. High, high-tech, high-technology replacement fund, does this have to do with fire, police, and EMS? Or this is IT?
This is, this is mostly IT. It covers citywide, as far as I understand.
Okay.
It also covers the public safety technology, like the, the radar. The technology that the police have out in the vehicles. There's a lot of equipment that, and it's, it's getting more and more. So it does cover that as well. We have a project, we're actually looking at what all needs to be included in this. And so that's one of the priorities that Chris and Steve, they're looking at that. And basically, a reboot of or revamp of this whole program or expansion.
And we do, just real quick, we do anticipate that you will see needs in this fund as part of your tenure, like when we talk this fall.
And then the fleet replacement, we did not purchase something last year, is that correct?
We purchased an ambulance with access on funds in a latter purchase the previous year. And then the GeoVon has two engines and an ambulance in it.
It's not part of this, no.
What's the lead time on those nowadays?
The ambulance is going to be about 19 months turnaround. I was in Florida last week on vacation, and I went by, and it's ready to be inspected. It's upon 19 months, it's a very long turnaround. And typically, that would have been about an eight-month build. And typically, that would have been about an eight-month build.
If he says he can't leave a Cadillac Escalade, so.
Alright, so, uh, we're going for the airport fund. Um, and I I'm learning what a tremendous asset, uh, the airport is for, uh, the city of Sugar Land and the region. Uh, its mission is to be the safest, best-planned, and most-recognized premier reliever airport in the Houston area. So it serves as a reliever for both Bush and and Hobby airports. Um, and it's it's also, uh, it it contributes to the the region's economic development, and it really is an asset for the city. Uh, in terms of bringing opportunities, um, through economic development in other areas. Just to touch on, uh, FY twenty-one, on the revenue side, um, we have seen, and you'll see on some charts here, uh, briefly. That, uh, that we are seeing, um, we're exceeding the the sales as far as fuel is concerned, based on what the budget was. But they're being sold at a, um, a deeper discount tiers, and so, uh, the translation on the revenue side isn't the same as if they were at the at the. At the higher tiers. Um, the hangar leases, charges for service, they are coming in higher than we originally anticipated. We've had a lot of discussion about, um, interest rates and the current market conditions around those, and so those are lower. And then, um, the airport did benefit from, uh, refunding that was done, and, uh, on the bond posting side, it translates to one point four million dollars. This is just a quick chart, uh, chart to show, um, that the average aircraft served. You can see the two dips, um, obviously the start of the pandemic and then the winter freeze. Uh, otherwise, the chart, uh, shows that the levels are starting to return to some of those pre-pre-pandemic levels. Mentioned fuel cells, uh, the the light, the lighter blue line is the budget for this year. The green line that's trending above that line is where we are at, um, in terms of actuals, um, to show that we're, uh, that that recovery is is proceeding.
Can can just go back one step?
Yes, sir. One more.
No, no, this is fine. I just, I used, was, I was trying to get the color. It's hard to see the colors.
Yeah, so the light blue line here is divided, um, and then.
Okay.
Green line is where, uh, actuals are coming in.
And that's three hundred, so so for, I'm in July of this year. I'm looking at about slightly less than three hundred thousand gallons for the month of July or for. Okay, for the month.
For the month.
That's jet fuel in it, I guess.
Around three million gallons here.
It would be combined, yeah.
That that whole, perfect.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright.
Uh, I'm sorry, just took me a while to see the colors.
And I and I apologize, because some of this I've seen so many times that I'm. Um, this is just a financial summary, uh, for airports as far as FY twenty-one. Um, and you can see the impact on the revenue side as far as, um, if you remove the the bond proceeds from the refund. That the revenue is coming in, uh, slightly lower because of those discount tiers. Um, as far as this fund is concerned, there's a cash reserve targeted minimum of twenty-five percent. So you can see that we're we're trending all above that, and then the bond coverage has a targeted minimum of one point two five, and we are above that as well. Our assumptions for FY twenty-two, um, is, uh, we have a conservative one percent increase, uh, from FY nineteen actuals. The miscellaneous revenues are based on what we're seeing in the current trends. And then there are, uh, anticipated bond proceeds, um, for the improvements at the taxiway of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, but you can see, based on revenue, that the majority of that revenue comes from those fuel cells.
You're gonna blow that out. That one percent is very, very conservative. What's going on in the market today is with COVID. Flights that were twelve thousand dollars private are twenty thousand, and people, and they, you still can't get them at twenty thousand. And so there's just a big uptick in this, and it's ridiculous. We're gonna blow that number.
Opportunity.
Yeah.
This chart just shows the trend as far as, uh, where the, um, gallons gallons sold are at on an annual basis. Um, and you can see, uh, after the dip from, as a result of the pandemic challenges, um, that we're returning to those. Pre-pandemic levels on this.
So you know I have a question. He started it, and I know this may not be the Q and A moment. But I wanna be the the most wrong guy in the room. But as I look at that, uh, the FY twenty, these were, uh. COVID, I'm I'm going, cause I'm going back to the graph you you referred to also. So COVID hammered us off of our budget. And right now, Delta has us at a, uh, infection rate or whatever the term is today. That is literally on track to blow away what we saw in twenty twenty. But we seem pretty confident, is what I'm getting at. I mean, it had a very hard impact on us. And I'm not saying you're wrong. I'm hoping I'm wrong, that that FY twenty-two line is not gonna be half of it. Because Delta is coming at us at a at a rate that we never, I never even dreamed it could get. Not only i- it could happen twice reoccurring, but the the numbers that are out there globally right now, I'm like, holy moly. I mean, it's charting up where we were here and it's, so I'm hoping I'm wrong, and you're absolutely correct.
It's a little bit different with commercial aviation.
Yes, sir.
This is private. So what you're seeing is, and you saw it in COVID, a lot of major corporations went to private aircraft. Cause there was a way to get their executives around, you know, what they saw was safely. Uh, we're continuing to see the man Elizabeth, go ahead, Elizabeth, go ahead, Beth.
I just wanted to to touch on that. We saw the dip in business when the travel restrictions were in place for COVID, not necessarily. Uh, the COVID infections.
It was that March-April timeframe, and when the economy was just shut down.
And and again, I don't mind being wrong. She's in the business every day. But, uh, the travel bans, it was interesting she brought that up. I wouldn't be surprised if that didn't start happening again. I mean, people are getting that nervous again, probably rightfully so, but I I don't know. I don't. Commercial, yeah, thank you. That's the third time I've heard that today.
Well, but to your point, I I think that that's part of our responsibility, right, is to work with that and have those conversations throughout the year. To make sure that we're monitoring it. That's part of the responsibility that we bear.
But but William brings up a very important point, right, and Jennifer's are are sitting there. I mean, last year we did factor in the check mark and the U and all that, and we're still feel good. Um, I'm I'm hopeful that there's not an economic shutdown. Uh, it'll be the worst thing that any of us can do. I think we have to live with what we've got and get our boosters, I think, here in September twentieth and all. But, um, I think that's the difference, William, is is, uh, we're, we still feel comfortable if there's a little bit of a dip in shutdown. Perfect. That's what I wanted to hear.
I told you, this is my most, the most stressful part. This is just a quick, uh, quick comparison, uh, as far as the expenditures for the airport fund, uh, operations versus the total. Uh, you can see, uh, the percentage that that fuel accounts for on both side, uh, on both sides of this. And then when you work in, um, debt service and then, uh, the funding for CIP and transfers out from this department, just for comparison. As far as, um, budget requests that were approved for the airport or that are, um, recommended for the airport. Um, it includes, uh, um, a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for runway, uh, rubber removal. It include includes a refresh for the, uh, crew suite and terminal area, and then, uh, inspection services overtime. Uh, this is just a snapshot of the airport fund summary. Um, again, uh, the cash re- cash reserve, uh, the goal is twenty-five percent. And you can see where we're at compared to that. Bond coverage, um, is one point two five and it's still lower, reflecting according to that. Personally monitor it throughout the year based on what we see. As far as the forecast, um, assumptions for the airport on the revenue side, we we are forecasting conservatively one one percent. Annual growth with no additional markup increases. Um, there are certificates of obligation for CIP projects in FY twenty-two. And then there is in the out-years, um, a scheduled tech stock reimbursement for land acquisition on the west side. You'll see it reflected in the out-years, uh, on the revenue side. Uh, I think I believe that's something that we're still waiting to to come in from tech stock.
Scott, I have a question for Beth. Beth, you still on?
I am.
Beth, what are you hearing from our fuel distributor in terms of, of increases, anything at all?
From our fuel provider?
Yes.
Like pricing increase?
Prices increases, any, any shortages, that kind of thing?
Uh, we work, I mean, there's been certain, uh, certain situations at the plants. Uh, but we we have a good relationship with our fuel provider. Um, so we don't, and they have backup plans, so for fuel shortages, I'm I'm not necessarily. Uh, too concerned with. We we talk to them regularly. Um, with the pricing, uh, where we watch it, we get notifications from them weekly on what the prices. Uh, are are going to be. Um, we do absorb that, and that cost is passed along to our customers.
Thanks, Beth. So it's passed through?
Yes.
Okay, then on the expenditure side, uh, it's planned at one point five percent growth in terms of department expenses. The fuel, uh, expenditures are based, are they're based to match the the gallons, uh, purchased. And then, um, we include debt service for the new COs that we issue for, uh, CIP projects. This chart just shows, um, the projections for, uh, aviation fuel set, uh, sales. I should note here, um, that the airport is currently working with a consultant on these, uh, fuel tiers and recommendations. And those will be coming from Beth, uh, like down the road. Uh, this, just a snapshot of the five-year forecast, you can see in the out-years, uh, in FY twenty-six, the revenue that I talked about coming from tech stock. That's the, that's the main difference here. Uh, and then you can see where the operations reserve is and the bond, uh, coverage going in the out-years. As far as the forecast is concerned. Any questions about, uh, this before I move into the CIP projects for the airport?
Yeah, we already have the US Customs there, and then we printed airport master plan. We asked the question, what would it be to affect to become an international airport? And, uh, I was just wondering if anything that was factored into the long-term forecast assumptions.
I may need to defer to Beth as far as.
This is Beth's question. Yeah, I mean, an international airport as opposed to regional airport.
Well, and we, and it's funny you say that. We'll let Beth talk to it. Um, I mean, we are an international airport. Um, and, uh, and Beth, would you like to talk about that, the name?
I mean, the name, yeah, I mean, we're, yeah, we have an official language. We make the criteria to be an international airport.
Uh, so we, so that process is is, uh, a little more lengthy. Uh, we haven't necessarily had the conversations that we need to have internally and with, uh, city management to change the name officially. Um, but that is something that we can explore. We we are able to change our name and include international. Um, but like I mentioned, that there is a process that we would have to follow.
Question.
Go ahead.
Uh, on the aviation fuse set, fuel cells for twenty-two, twenty-six, is that based on the current occupancy? Or, I mean, we are increasing our hangar lease space, so don't we have a lot more opportunity to increase that?
With the fuel, with our hangar occupancy directly, we're at capacity for our corporate hangers, um, that we own. Um, so the only hangers we have available are are smaller T-hangers, uh, at the GA complex.
That's Scott Harbor. Beth has got some hangers.
Yes, Sky Harbor, Sky Harbor has, uh, five hangers, um, until they are finished constructing phase two. Um, and y'all recently approved, uh, an amendment to their lease. And so they, uh, per their lease, they need to start construction on phase two, uh, by October twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Beth. Okay, so to touch on the the planned CIP projects at the airport in FY twenty-two. Uh, there's the parallel, uh, taxiway relocation and hangers, ALD four and eleven. Uh, I believe that these are construction replacement hangers for the airport corporate one-hanger. Then in the out-years, there's, uh, a plan for the airport terminal, uh, ramp, construction of the airport terminal ramp expansion. Those are what is included in the CIP. Beth also provided us, and we wanted to speak to, um, some of the needs that they've identified. Um, that are that are not currently included in the, uh, the CIP. Uh, but we've got a breakdown of the five-year and ten-year. Uh, it should be important to note that, um, in the, in the future. We'll be working to both refine the scope and the project cost estimates, as well as the available funding. A lot of these projects are funded. Uh, with grants through Tech Dot or other means, and so they'll be discussed in the future. But this is give you a quick snapshot of the needs that the airport has identified.
Beth, you wanna go into a little bit of the Tech Dot Aviation Conference? There continues to be pressure on federal dollars. You might talk a little bit about that.
Sure. So the message from the Tech Dot Conference, um, has actually been the same for the last couple of years. And that they're not able to afford all of the, uh, CIP projects. For, uh, the GA airports, uh, within the state of Texas. So the funding hasn't, uh, increased. And so they're not necessarily able to fund every project, uh, needed. And so that's really the message that they they've been discussing with us and just trying to work. Uh, on a partnership together in trying to, uh, increase funding for, uh, GA airports.
Yeah, the good news is you've got an updated master plan and you've got great relationships with Tech Dot Aviation. So we're probably positioned as well as anybody to get those dollars as anybody else.
Correct. And and, uh, uh, Tech Dot actually, uh, we just started the conversations with Tech Dot. Uh, on future projects for the airport as well. So we're gonna continue having those conversations with them.
Thank you, Beth.
Scott, can I add one thing to the airport? Um, I watch too many different city council meetings from cities all around. And I gotta tell you how proud I am that we get to have this conversation, because the airport is truly a winner for our city. And it's so cool to listen to the conversations and and everything that pours into that particular topic. Uh, I, people ask me all the time, well, what about that airport? Oh, my God, let's talk about it. And they, it drives them crazy, because at the end of the day, it's being run so well that it truly is a winner for the city. And I'm just so proud of it.
Self-standing business.
Yeah, it it's it's fabulous.
Yeah, it shouldn't be lost. It's it's it is self-sustaining. It's, there's no subsidy for the general fund.
Yeah, it's fabulous.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna, uh, now we're gonna review solid waste. Um, just a quick synopsis of the the solid waste, uh, program. Uh, it's designed to provide residential solid waste collection. Part of that includes recycling. Um, and then emergency response for debris removal. And there's also a component to, uh, have community outreach and education for the community as well. Some of the assumptions that go into our plan for FY twenty-two, it includes that we have approximately thirty-five thousand residents that we serve. I should say customer accounts that we we serve. Um, uh, Republic Service has the current contract that that contract is is scheduled to expire March of twenty-three. And there's currently a process to go, uh, go through our RFP process for our next contract. In terms of, um, the solid waste contract itself, the rate for this year, which continues through December thirty-first, is nineteen dollars and seventy-six cents. For the terms of the contract, um, it should be noted that, um, it provides for an annual increase of between two point five percent or, uh, CPI. Not to exceed five percent, but the city was, uh, able to negotiate with Republic for a contractual contractual increase of one point two. Uh, five percent, which is significant for, uh, the city. Uh, this increase would take effect January first, uh, resulting in a new rate of twenty dollars. Uh, we also account for franchise fees that are part of this, and it's a five percent of gross receipts for residential and commercial. The city manager did appoint a task force in June of twenty twenty-one, uh, in conjunction with, uh, the contract for service. Um, expiring in the future RFP, um, the the responsibility. um, expiring in the future RFP. Um, the, the responsibility of this task force is to prioritize what solid waste programs, uh, what, what goals will be established for the program going forward. Uh, evaluate the strategies to meet those goals, um, and then ultimately provide a recommendation for service levels for the next solid waste contract. This just gives you a quick, uh, overview on the revenue side. Um, you can, it functions primarily as a, uh, as a pass-through account. Solid waste charges account for 92% of that with franchise fees covering this, not 8%. Uh, we tried several times to remove the zero other, but, I mean, we failed, so, um, just acknowledge that. On the expenditure side again, uh, most of the, most of the expenses are associated with the contract. There's a small percentage for, uh, personnel, uh, and then non-operating costs on this, um, fund.
Scott, so.
Yes, sir.
But the $20 a month rate is to our customer?
Yes.
Thirty-six thousand?
Yes, sir.
So it says 3% personnel. That covers the people here, our employees in there?
Correct.
Is Republic charging us 19, or 1976 a month currently? Or that's what we are charging the customer?
No, and I'm, and I'm looking at Stacy in case you get too specific.
You know, looking at Jennifer here because she's saying no to me over there. So I got my eye over here. I can't see her back here. Okay, so I just wanted to make sure. So we charge our personnel fee is included in that 1976, which is now going to be 20 months. Perfect. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So Scott, on the 9.2 million, where, where's, what is the makeup of that? I, I see $20 a month. I see 35,000 residential. That's nowhere near 9.2. Where's that number come from?
Then as far as the revenues concerned?
Yeah, what, like, where does that total revenue come from?
That comes, that comes from the customer accounts and that, that 1976 or.
Including commercial.
But the franchise fees.
The franchise fees cover that. This, yeah.
The solid waste charges are only residential.
This only applies to the residential service that's provided. The franchise fees are, is what covers commercial.
It, it adds up quickly. It, it is.
Yeah, I, I, I'm sorry. I, I don't.
It's $20 a month. It's, it's $90.
Okay, I, I just don't, I'm doing the math. I don't see it. But you're, hey, your one's harder than me.
William, in your budget book on page 12.
I, it's actually on my desk. I apologize. I didn't bring it this morning.
It'll give you the breakdown. The collections are 8.5, the franchise fee is 720,000.
Okay.
That's how you get to the 9.2, 9.3 basis.
Yeah, William, that's $20 a month. So then you multiply it out times 12. That's 8.64.
Eight point six, okay.
So you're, we're there. And that's exactly what Mary just said. Pretty, pretty close to what you just said. Carol?
A resident asked last month, why we have to pay the city sales tax on, uh, solid waste collection?
Yeah, so solid waste is a tax of the service under the tax code, um, and that's why we make a charge it.
Okay, simple.
That's simple.
Okay, and, uh, this is just a summary of the fund. Um, it, it does function as a, as more of a pass-through account based on the contract. Uh, I should note for FY21, uh, the expenditures does include the response for winter storm. Uh.
Yuri, you know, the negotiations.
I was in, uh, I was in Arizona at that time, so, watching the news, but.
So, yes, sir. Question here. Not that I'm trying to increase the $20, but Yuri taught us something. As Paul learned back in 2018, should we have a reserve for opportunity here set aside for the next Yuri or the next Harvey or anything else? Because that's gonna throw us in a, in a whirlwind of trouble again. We've gotta go pick up tons of trash.
Excellent.
Or anything else.
Council member, I'm glad you mentioned that. So one of the things that we're discussing as part of the, um, plan for the next contract is how we can uh, best address how to build a, a fund balance to be able to respond to those kinds of issues.
Which, but you, you can't really build one to respond to like a hurricane, like, um, Ike was, I think, a 10, 12 million dollar debris event. So there's just a certain point where you, but I think you need to build up enough of one to deal with the probably non-reversible FEMA type emergencies that we have.
And the issue we have with the winter storm is that it is not reversible by FEMA because the declaration was only for the immediate response to the storm. In a hurricane or a rain event, that debris is going to normally be part of the reversible expense. But in this case, the disaster declaration did not cover debris because it was kind of a subsequent.
160s and that thing.
And.
They just will help Bob and Chris and everyone else make decisions when things are brewing out there.
I, I agree. We need, uh, we do budget a contingency in this fund. Um, and, uh, the franchise fees are what have allowed us to build the fund balance in this fund that allowed us to have that response, um, to the storm. Like, yeah, I agree. We need to, we need to build something else up in here.
I'm gonna walk through, uh, the special revenue funds that the city holds. For the most part, special revenue funds, they, they are either to capture restricted revenue on, uh, and then also to help us with our tracking and also monitor, uh, both the revenue expenditures in these funds. And again, I'm relying on X risk because I may not have much historical background on these. So, so first, uh, court security. There's a, uh, $4.90 charge that goes into each conviction. Um, and they're restricted to provide to security. That can be, if I understand it right, that can either be security equipment or personnel. Where, um, we are providing, uh, 40% of the funding for one court, uh, bailiff. And then there's a second bailiff that's currently funded out of the general fund. Uh, I believe that the revenues, um, that, I think the, uh, the shutdown, um, contributed to some of the, um, reduction in these funds for FY21. Court technology, this fund is, uh, funding is dedicated towards improving, uh, and supporting the technology that exists over at, uh, the court. Uh, it's $4 per, um, conviction, um, and it's restricted to improving the technology. The law enforcement funds, uh, for this, for the state, uh, it's a percentage of, uh, the funds from the sale of property seized by either, uh, Sugar Land Police or Fort Bend County. Um, the federal funding, um, is, is reserved for law enforcement related activities. And then the law enforcement side of the funding, uh, is from the sale of abandoned vehicles that are, uh, found on public property. After a set aside to deal with abandoned vehicles, the funds can be used for law enforcement activities. Uh, I should note as far as FY21, the expenditures there were for fencing at the police, uh, facility. Um, and then we, uh, purchased, uh, ticket writers, uh, uh, equipment to process tickets. So. Questions about those? All right. Debt reduction funds, the two that we have are for Riverstone and Terra Plantation. Uh, Terra participates in the groundwater reduction plan, which, uh, provides for a 20% service fee. And these fees are, are for service that's provided outside of the city, uh, limits. The revenue is generated from those, um, service fees and then, um, the use of funds is restricted to annexation purposes. And so you'll see that, um, we're collecting the revenue, but we don't, we don't have, we don't budget expenditures for them. And so it continues to remain in the fund balance and those are obviously held for future needs based on annexation. The only thing that, at, uh, River Park, uh, PID, it supports the infrastructure reinforcements at this development. I think, um, Jennifer Brown went into a lot of detail about the efficiencies that are gained from forming this to pay for the public infrastructure that's involved. Uh, I should note that, as she mentioned, but the 2020 assessment was $560 per lot. And for, uh, for going into next year, the assessment is for, 460 a lot, per lot, and those are scheduled out over the, the life of the debt.
Yeah, Jennifer, given all the questions we got last year about that, you know, the response, I think from staff, we're kind of clear up their understanding. We got no secret questions at all. Um, so it was, it was right up on y'all's part to get that cleared up.
So accordingly, just on, on the financial side, uh, expenditures are related to debt service, uh, as far as the fund is concerned.
Does it take much staff time to manage the PID?
No, at this point, um, it's really just administration of the assessment. Um, the majority of the time, um, when we have the new PID that we, uh, you all approved earlier this year, um, I think most of the work administratively comes in upfront in the negotiation of the agreements. Um, then we'll have a little bit more work, um, as the developer submits for reimbursement. And so this one, uh, reimbursement is given in January. We have to engage, um, an authorized review that, um, that reverses the request. Um, and then after that, it's pretty much just the administration of it. So, yeah, it's fairly, um, it's, it's pretty efficient. Just take a clarifying.
Uh, the Public Education and Government Fund, known as PEG, um, this is, uh, fees that are paid for by cable service providers, um, and the funding is used for, uh, education purposes. Um, it's restricted to capital, um, equipment. And so, um, so essentially, we, we use it to support the broadcasting needs for, uh, for the city. Animal shelter donations, these are donations that are provided, um, essentially by the public, uh, to support the operations, um, at, um, the animal shelter. Um, and essentially we budget to use, use whatever we receive on an annual basis. Just a quick note on the American Rescue Plan Funding, or ARPA. Um, this was, this is funding that's been allocated by the federal government. Um, and we've created a fund to help capture, uh, this fund. And we have it set aside accordingly. And it will be included as part of the fall retreat for council to talk about priorities for this fund.
What are the dollars for that?
So, uh, in FY21, we've received half of it. So 5.56 will receive the rest of it in FY22. So a total of just over 11 million.
Jennifer, your number was 116.
D69.
I left. It's a pretty good number. I mean, hair scan, 800 meters, uh, said, city used, place of population.
Uh, then just a quick note on, uh, the fee ordinance and user fee recommendation, because this will be coming, uh, to you on, uh, September 7th. Um, according to financial management policy statements, um, we had to adjust, uh, user fees by CPI. Most of the fees are adjusted, um, by the CPI 3%. Um, there will be some recommended fee, some fees that are recommended not to adjust. That's based on, uh, direct, direction of recommendation from the various departments, um, who charge those fees based on those needs.
Do we have a list of those fees?
We do. Um, it's provided, it will be provided to you as part of the, uh, on this, on, prior to the meeting on September 7th for you to review.
The, the ordinance for these fees is about 35 pages. Uh, so it's taking some time to go through.
Big expression.
Um, and we're gonna be, uh, reviewing with finance audit committee if there's a number meeting, but we'll try to provide this to you in advance of the meeting.
Certainly.
Um, so you can have that to review. The ones most interested in are like parks and, and, uh, things like that, general public. Yes, exactly. Yeah, and that, that's the, the least part of it. Uh, but yes, we can, we can try to provide those to you in advance. Thank you.
So the goal has been to recover all the costs, not necessarily make a profit.
Right, yes. And, but in many cases, you, not even recovering cost isn't even feasible. Um, just because it is, a lot of the fees are subsidized by property taxes or the services. So, um, there, you're trying to have that balance. Excellent.
And just a quick look at the calendar as far as what's coming forward. I mentioned that next week, um, we'll come back to you to talk about economic development as, as well as the utility fund. On September 7th, we'll cover, uh, a mini of the FY21 budget to projections. We'll have a public hearing on the FY22 proposed budget. Uh, it'll be the first reading of the fee ordinance, um, and then the first reading of the PID, um, assessment ordinance. On the 14th, we'll have the public hearing on the post-tax rate. And then on the 21st, uh, will, the budget will come back for a vote to adopt, uh, including the, uh, five-year CIP and the compensation plans. Um, we'll adopt the 2021 tax rate and then we'll have a second reading of the fee ordinance and PID assessments. With that, are there any, uh, other questions that I can direct you to someone else?
Wes, wait, hang on.
Ew, I've always got a question, Mayor. And he's always giving me that look. Hey, so here's, well, first question, or first statement, uh, regarding law enforcement funds and court funds and all that. You know, every time I review, uh, our revenues related to law enforcement, related to citations, related to all that we do in law enforcement here. Um, and I'll use the term, you know, the, the, uh, 2020 produced the, uh, term defunding the police. You know, there's a place for that when the law enforcement is used as a revenue stream for a city. That is when, I believe, you defund the police. And the city of Sherland proves. Yuri, and every time, every page that I look at, that is not a, a, a revenue stream for our city. We are in the law enforcement protecting our city. And every time I see your numbers, regardless of what fund we're looking at, it, it just proves once again, I mean, we're doing this the right way. And, and I'm really proud of every time I look through the law enforcement stuff. I just think it's fabulous. And I think we're a great example for everyone. Now, with that said, off law enforcement, oh, and I did try to look it up quick enough, but I was too slow. Going back to our solid waste, um, to understand, for, uh, clarity here. So our, uh, revenue, if I may, from our solid waste agreement is $700,000-ish. Correct? On 5%, am I?
Per inch fees, they've been about, yeah, it averages.
Been about, is that's annual?
Yes.
Okay, and do you feel that, because ultimately, especially all of us that have been in the private sector, uh, we, we know what's working for us and what's not working for us. Do you feel the, uh, because ultimately the people paid a 700K to come back to us because it's put into a contract? I don't mind saying it, because if I had a deal, I would say, oh yeah, you need that sure here. And it would be increased to that. Are, are, are we feel, I mean, is this time to talk about, are we efficient with this 700K? Not like, do we need to do it? Or, I don't know. I've not dug into committees or.
Yeah, so the decision, we used to have a franchise fee just on commercial, a small one, I think 2% somewhere around there. When we did the last contract, we negotiated a, uh, the franchise fee for, for the entire service. And the, the reason why was those are large vehicles that are on the public streets that are using the public right of way that, um, have wear and tear. And so that's what we negotiated. The reality is none of those phones, funds have been diverted to, they've gone into really pavement management. And then they've gone into, to, to the staff administration of solid waste. And then you've seen they've gone into building a reserve that just was used to fund the, the, uh, you know, Yuri's storm instead of using, you know, tax dollars. So, um, so, yeah, I mean, I think we need to look at it when we go and do the new, the, the new 23, make sure that we're, we're on point with it. But that was the intention of it. I think it's met the intention.
Of that 700,300 of it gets transferred into the general fund and is used for pavement rehabilitation?
Well, the other thing we noticed was because it was over the old providers, they had to be licensed. Most of them weren't. They didn't keep up with, you know, we didn't have the materials. So I had, we had, we had everybody's brother out there hauling commercial stuff, tearing up our streets and just generally not in compliance. And that's when council took the action, said that enough's enough. Let's go to one provider, one franchise fee, a franchise fee of benefit to city. City could use it to, you know, repair, you know, the wear and tear on the streets. That's where it came from.
Uh, and by the way, I'm sure it was a great decision. I'm not doubting any of that. Uh, and I had a, uh, I had a lunch this week with, uh, one of our constituents. And she said, you know, I've never even had a trash problem. She lives in Sherland. She goes, I've, we've never even had, she goes, I've lived here like 15 years and we've never even, our cans never even been missed. And I'm like, where do you live? I mean, this is so, so, if I may, so on a personal perspective, I'm like, really? You know, like, I want to move there. You know, that's how I felt. Uh, and I, I told her, I said, our electricity's out all the time. I said, half my neighborhood looks like they're investing in generators. Nothing to do with the city, but I'm getting back to the, the solid waste. And, uh, she goes, your electricity goes out. And I started thinking, where do I live? Here's my whole point. Uh, for the 700K that we get, do we feel like we have power with our provider to say, we got a problem, your arm keeps breaking, we have a problem. We can fix it. Like the city can solve it with our influence, uh, in our relationship. Because, uh, remember, I'm on the side that I'm hearing it all the time. I mean, they got Facebook book groups for it. And I'm like, are we utilizing this 700K fully to our advantage? Do we have the power to even fix these repetitive problems? Which I haven't been vocal about, you know, I've been real good lately. And, uh, I, I just, I, I see the number and I. And I, I just, I, I see the number and I'm like, oh my gosh, we should be able to fix all this stuff. I mean, I'm starting to think I need to buy a garbage truck and drive around and throw it in the back. I mean, that's how frustrated and the mayor knows, and I'm a little silly. But I, I'm frustrated with it. So when I see this, I'm thinking, man, we should be able to rock this thing. We should be able to airport this thing. Airport, what they do, however they do it, man, we should be able to do it in solid waste. And I don't feel like I see that, that service level. I'm bragging on the airport and the police department. Fire's good too, chief, don't judge me. But I just don't know, in my opinion, one person's opinion, are we doing the best we can with our 700K? Or do we even need to do it and say, hey, we, we can't manage this? I don't know.
Yeah, and I, I would tell you, I think 90% of our residents would disagree with you.
Okay.
I think based on our surveys, they would say that it's a good service. I would also say that if you, if we're honest with ourselves, any transition is going to be a nightmare.
Sure, I agree.
And in 23, that, that's gonna be a nightmare. And so how is solid waste functioning today versus how it was six months ago? I think we'd all say.
Oh, we're better.
Dramatically improved.
I agree.
I'm also in some of the same groups you're in and I think some people, there's, their sense of entertainment is looking out the window and.
It is.
And critiquing the garbage truck and so that's providing a service too.
William, I've lived here 13 years and never had issues with my trash.
It is, so. And so I, I, I do, this, you know, the 700,000, the reality is that we negotiate that as part of the deal. It's gone, it's replaced a lot of pavement. It has paid for monitors to go out and stay on top of Republic Services. It has, in the past, we were having commercial property serviced at 2:00 AM, 1:00 AM, behind people's houses and we were chasing providers all over the city. We don't have that anymore because Republic knows that if they do that, they're going to get hammered. So I would tell you, there's been tremendous improvements over the last 10 years and there's still more, more to go.
Sure, and by the way, there's another group that likes to complain after they get their brand new beautiful sidewalks that the stick is still in the ground by the sidewalk and they don't care that they got a new sidewalk, but the stick is really, really bothering them. And I drive by there and I throw it in the bed of my truck and I'm like, you guys okay? I mean, I, I'm, I'm playing back with you. No, I appreciate that, I mean, you guys are critical thinkers and that's why I bring it up. You know, my perspective obviously is different than Nishad's because he's living in a very happy place, because I saw it recently. And, but anyway, I'm giving him a word. Yesterday was his birthday, okay.
By, by the way, Paula, sign me up for the colonoscopy. I turned 50 yesterday, because I need one.
Give him two.
All right, we're, no more questions.
If I may, and Jennifer, Jennifer Mayer, Mike, we had pulled the hook on me. But, you know, to your comment, you know, Mike told me when I started, I've been here for 10 weeks, that, and I told him, I said, I feel a lot of pressure, right? Because I've been with the same organization there as long for 17 years. And Mike told me, don't worry, we're in just as much pressure to, to, to portray to you that we, we are, who we say we are. And I'll tell you that from the staff, exceptional, from an engaged council, like it bears out. When, you know, I'm, I'm getting to know the community and when I tell people where I, that we moved here and that we, that I, where I work, they, they have nothing but exceptional things to say about the city. And so I'm excited, but I think this is a well-run city and it, it bears out with your leadership and this leadership team for sure, so thank you.
Thank you.
Especially yours.
Yes, I'm in.